Good evening, everyone. We will call the November seventeen, two thousand and fourteen, City Council meeting to order. First order of business is roll call. Heidi.
Scott. Drew. Louis. Doyle. Wright. Estes. Nordstrom. Roberts. Weyfenbach. Laurenti. We have a court.
Thank you. And we will now recognize Pastor Scott Wiley of Word of Hope Church for our invocation. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together here and do business of our community. We pray, Father, for grace and wisdom upon our council and upon our citizens. We pray for your blessing upon our community. We thank you so much for it. We just pray, Father, that there would be peace, that there be harmony, that even though we may not always agree on things, we can do so without being disagreeable. We thank you, Father, for the privilege it is to serve the good people of Rapid City. And we pray for your blessing. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Scott. We are now on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Motion by Scott, second by Roberts, to adopt the agenda as is. Any discussion? Seen none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on to our wards and recognitions. And first, we have Dave Bamberg from Ward Four. He's our Veteran of the Month. And if John Roberts and Amanda Scott could join me down front. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the November two thousand and fourteen Veteran of the Month recognition to David Bamberg.
Thank you, Mayor. David Bamberg was raised in Shreveport, Louisiana, where he stayed even into his first two and a half years in the United States Air Force when he joined in nineteen eighty-four. David attended Barksdale Air Force Base in Louisiana from nineteen eighty-four to nineteen eighty-seven as security police billeting. In nineteen eighty-seven, he attended tech school for the B-1B at Lowry Air Force Base for a year. Later in life, David went back briefly to Louisiana Tech to complete his Bachelor of Science degree in Journalism. From nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-five, David was stationed at Ellsworth Air Force Base in offensive avionics, B-1B, and public affairs. During his time at Ellsworth Air Force Base, David married the former Marine, Marnie Storm. Their first child was born at Ellsworth when they still had a hospital on the base. That goes back a ways. David's career in the military took him across the country and around the world. He was assigned to Holloman Air Force Base in New Mexico from nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-seven, where he served in information management with the Seventh Fighter Squadron, F-117 Training Squadron. There, he compiled squadron history going back to World War II, or from World War II, to the present. Also, while in New Mexico, David and Marnie welcomed their second child. Then, the family moved to Osan Air Force Base in Korea, where David served the Fifth Reconnaissance Squadron U-2 in information management, followed by Shreveport Air Force Base in Colorado as information manager of multiple units. He deployed to Saudi Arabia while with the fiftieth support group.
Thank you, Amanda. Next, David was the test control officer at the military entrance processing station at Knoxville, Tennessee. Here, he administered armed services, vocational aptitude, battery, and other tests needed for entry into the military, as well as developed training plans for the entire testing section. This earned him a step promotion to E-7. His final military assignment was to Buckley Air Force Base in Colorado in information management for the four hundred and sixtieth support group and the four hundred and sixtieth Space Wing and Public Affairs until his retirement, December first, two thousand and six. He continued to serve at Buckley as a civilian employee until transferring back to Ellsworth as a civilian working at the Air Force Financial Services Center. David gave twenty-two years of dedicated service to the United States Air Force, but his service hasn't ended. Today, even after retirement, David has continued to fight for veterans' issues. He is a lifetime member of the Air Force Sergeants Association and locally has served as the chapter's legislative trustee, vice president, president, and now senior advisor. On a regular basis, David has personally met with the offices of South Dakota's two senators and Congresswoman to relay issues important to active duty retirees and their families. Issues such as yearly pay raises, cost of living adjustments, retired pay, and TRICARE healthcare. David, along with AFSA, has supported many activities in the local area from the Veterans Day Parade, Festival of Lights, numerous activities with the VFW, and other organizations. Just recently, he helped organize the Salute to Veterans Day at Main Street Square during autumn nights, and his chapter is working with Main Street Square to continue that tradition for years to come. Today, David's two children, Patrick nineteen and Ashley eighteen, are both recent graduates of Central High School. Also, Ashley is currently attending Black Hills at the University Center. Marnie is the manager of the Papa Murphy's Pizza in Bacon Park, and her sister manages the other store. Ironically, both kids also work at Papa Murphy's, so chances are pretty good that pizza is popular in the Baumberg House. Sounds like it. David has served our country, our city, and continues to serve our veterans. His example of service and sacrifice makes him deserving of this honor, and we would like to extend our gratitude. Thank you, David.
I'd like to thank my wife and my son coming up. He's not at work. My daughter was at work and at school. I continue to support the veterans, especially the Air Force. Coming up this week, the International President for the Air Force Sergeants Association will be visiting Ellsworth. We will sit down with Congresswoman Noam's office, Senator Thune's office, hopefully Senator-elect Rounds' office, to continue to fight, because even after we retire, our benefits aren't a sure thing. And the men and women in the uniform have fought, especially since nine eleven, they deserve our support and our continued support. They've already paid what they need to pay to earn these benefits. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm asking Daryl to come up, because when I read the briefing on David, what I was so pleased to see is that normally, city council representatives and the mayor's office come up with the nominations based on, you know, what we see in the community and who contacts us, and reading the articles and keeping up with what our constituents are doing. However, this nomination actually came from the community. And Daryl, if you would mind, because I don't have it on the top of my head, could you please give a briefing as far as how David got nominated for this? Because that was very impressive.
Sure. We have the Veterans Coordination Commission that meets once a month. All the different veterans organizations get together on the first Friday of each month, and they've been very integral in looking out for veterans' interests and nominating veterans, deserving veterans. And, you know, David's been part of that group. He's been part of so many different groups. And in a previous life, I was involved with the congressional delegation, and I can speak wholeheartedly of David's interest in sharing concerns about local veterans with the federal delegation. So, the Veterans Coordination was very integral in getting David and other veterans nominated for this process.
And thank you so much. And David, thank you.
This is James Van Nuys, who's our Citizen of the Month. If he could come up along with our Ward Three council members, Chad Lewis and Jerry Wright.
Dan Nuys was born in Whittier, California, in nineteen fifty-five, and has lived intermittently in Rapid City off and on for most of his life. He attended Wilmington College in Ohio and with a double major in art and music. He returned to the Black Hills in nineteen eighty-two and began to apply his artistic skills to the landscape that he loves, the Black Hills, Badlands, and the small forgotten prairie towns of western South Dakota. Known regionally as one of the finest interpreters of the South Dakota landscape, his finely detailed paintings capture the most subtle nuances of prairie and forest light.
James has a remarkable ability to maintain his exacting standards of quality and craftsmanship dramatically throughout this broad range of media, such as works in oils, acrylics, watercolors, bronze, and various drawing and print marking materials. His works in all media have been juried into and won awards in many national competitions, including Chicago's Oil Painter of America Show and open exhibitions of the Solomon Gundy Club in New York City. Besides being a well-known artist, James is a musician. He has long been acknowledged as the Black Hills' premier acoustic guitar finger picker. His repertoire covers a broad variety of traditional music, folk, blues, Irish, and ragtime. His original music incorporates influences from the Renaissance, Baroque, and classical music, as well as folk and new age. As City Council President, I share, as a member of the Rapid City Council, it is indeed with pleasure and honor to nominate James Van Nuys for the November fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen Citizen of the Month. My nomination of James is a formal gesture on the behalf of this community to recognize him as an outstanding community member. James cares about his community and has given back. His work as an artistic member of our Rapid City has helped preserve our community's history and culture. From his work on the mural at the Rapid City Regional Airport, the Veterans' Eagle in Memorial Park, three presidential statues in the downtown area, his depiction of our founding fathers at Independence Hall, the Rapid City Police Memorial, and the artistic classic Picnic near Interior are examples of his creative work and artistic genius. Rapid City is truly fortunate to have a resident artist of the quality and dedication of James Van Nuys. We are so grateful James is a part of our community and are proud of all the gifts and abilities he uses to promote the arts in our area. Thank you, James.
I first met James back in probably nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, something like that, back in the Sixth Street Deli was really going, and he was showing his stuff down there a lot. And he started being a musician with my friends, not being a musician, but playing with my friends at the counter players down at the firehouse every, he was the local band, I think, the entire summer, weren't you? And so, anyway, I always see him around town doing great things. He's very quiet, goes about his business, but he does a lot of good things for this community. It's really an honor to have him up here and have people like this in the community that are willing to step up and just contribute like that quietly and without any need for recognition. So, I think it's very appropriate we honor him tonight.
Thank you. My family has lived here for almost a hundred and thirty years in Rapid City, and it means a great deal to me to be honored as a citizen of Rapid City. I would like to thank those of you in city government, the Arts Council, and other arts organizations, and generous benefactors in the private sector who make public art possible here. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Do not have any general public comment items. Have I missed anyone on general public comment? If not, we'll move on to our regular agenda items. We'll now move on to public comment for items three through forty-five. Do we have any, we do not have any public comment for items three through forty-five. Have I missed anyone? Seen none. Public comment is now closed for items three through forty-five. Would any council members like to pull items three through forty, any items three through forty-five for a separate consideration? We'll first go to Alderman Ron Weyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull number four and number five.
Item number four and number five. We'll now go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull items eighteen, twenty, and thirty-one and thirty-two, please.
All right. So, we have four, five, eighteen, twenty, thirty-one, and thirty-two. We have a motion to approve the balance. We have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Nordstrom to approve items three through forty-five, with the exception of four, five, eighteen, twenty, thirty-one, and thirty-two. Any discussion? Seen none. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Items number four and five, we'll go to Alderman Chad Lewis to read these into the record for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four is a request by Dream Design International Inc. for Technology Housing Two LLC for a resolution to create a tax increment district seventy-five for lots one through sixteen and adjacent line of ways, lots one through sixteen and Block Five Denim and Subdivision located in subdivision one, generally located as between Saint Joseph Street and between Myrtle and Maple Avenue. I move to separate hearing.
We have a motion by Louis and a second by Roberts. And if there's any objection, if there's no objection, let's include five in that motion. Is that okay?
By all means.
With you? And is that okay with the seconder? Okay. And we'll first go to Alderman Ron Weyfenbach to speak on items four and five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate that. I believe I understood that it was the center hearing. And my question is that I sat on the TIF committee on this item, and it got chowed down at the TIF committee, got later approved at the Planning Commission. And my question here is that there's a process that needs to be followed for this TIF to be approved. And I would, at one point, I think our city attorney sent out a little bit of a, an outline kind of, some items that were missing from this TIP application. And I'm hoping that before that period of time, that we'll have that available so we can look at that information, like the contracts, the financials, the contract from the bank, those types of things. So, I'm not sure if I could, I don't know how to do that, if we're going to set the hearing for December first, if I had to make a motion, or if it's something that, I mean, I believe it should have been something that was in the, during the process, it should have been there, but I didn't see it. And I haven't seen it yet to this day. And now, we're setting a hearing for the first of December. I would like that information, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure how we-
Well, we can handle this a couple of ways. First of all, if our finance officers or city attorney have anything to add to this, we can go to them. Otherwise, what we can do is that we can proceed with setting for hearing. And if you don't receive the information that you're looking for at the hearing, you have every right to offer a motion to continue the hearing. Or, in the alternative, if you want to state what those, you kind of already did, but if you want to restate what those items are and bring it up at a future committee hearing, you're welcome to do that. There's several ways to do this.
I'm okay with setting a hearing. I just, I can't support something that doesn't meet the requirements of the process that was put in place over several years and several meetings and several periods of time. So, I guess if we have that information available on December first, that would be, or before then, so we can look at it ahead of time, that would be pertinent. So, thank you.
Do you have an idea of the information that you're looking for?
Not off the top of my head, but I do have some emails that were sent by the city attorney that kind of outlined some of the stuff that seemed to be relevant to this situation. So-
We'll go to our city attorney, if that's all right. Joel Landine. Joel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I assume that the information that Alderman Weyfenbach is referring to is the information that was on the item that was previously added to the agenda, the discussion that occurred, and I can't remember the exact meeting date, but several weeks ago. And I did send out an email at that time, generally discussing approval of TIFs, but not any specific documents that I can recall. Just that, I believe the question that was posed to me was whether we could request those or not. And I could resend out that response. But again, I assume the documents he's requesting are the ones that he, the item was put on the agenda by either Alderman Weyfenbach or Laurenti. I can't recall which one. And there was a discussion at that time, in my recollection, as the council decided that it was premature to ask for those. So, I think it's kind of up to the council to, at this point, decide if you want those documents or not and let the applicant know. But I assume it's the same documents that you were seeking at that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can, if I get another copy of that email, I can summarize and send it to everybody and go from there, I guess. I can send an email back with the information, I think. Or, I mean, it's a process that's in place by this council. I mean, it's pretty straightforward to me. So, but I can summarize what I feel is missing, and maybe that would be helpful, I believe. So-
Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to amend the motion to include that stipulation for the hearing, that that information be attached to items four and five. It's from my understanding, as well as what the city attorney has just said, that there were some on the council.
Why don't you offer your amendment?
Yep, there you go.
Get a second to-
To request that information.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion on the floor for items four and five that the, if I can summarize, the financial information that had been previously discussed at Legal and Finance be provided as part of the hearing for items four and five.
That's correct.
Is that a fair summary?
That's fair.
Okay, so that's, we are now on the amendment only of the, on this, only the amendment. So, we'll hold comments to the amendment. And Alderman Laurenti, you still have the floor if you want it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize for that. I should know that by now. My comments on that are that some of the council thought it was premature to ask for that information the last time we discussed it, and I believe it would be pertinent for us to have that information available, to give the developers the time to put it together. And December first is going to be the hearing. I would say it would be appropriate for us now to ask for that information. Whether it changes your mind about this, these particular agenda items, I think, is up to each individual, each, up to each one of us up here. But I believe the information is important for us to see so that we can all make that decision. Thank you.
We'll go to Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Comment, potentially a question for Mr. Landine. I think when we had this discussion last time, I think we pretty much all agreed on the merits of the information that was being requested. I think one thing in fulfilling Mr. Weyfenbach's request is to give us a clear distinction. This has gone through the TIF process. It's also gone through the Planning Commission with the TIF guidelines, and it was determined that this particular information was not part of that process. I'm hearing conflicting information. It's believed by some that it should be a requirement, and it is a requirement, but was not provided. And it's, I mean, it was unanimous through the Planning Commission that it was not required. So, could you please give us a clear distinction on if that information needed to be provided and was not, or didn't need to be provided, just so that we have that moving forward? Thank you.
Okay. Do you have a question to direct any?
Not any.
We'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
If I remember the discussion, that's when Hanny was here a while back. Let's make sure that the information that we're requesting is only information that's appropriate for the action that we'd be taking, and not beyond that.
Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree with Alderman Wright that some of the information that has been requested was a little bit of out of order, and some of that is remaining confidential for that information to become available. And what I'm trying to recall as well is that, what I remember it as is that the total price of the purchase of the property has not been totally settled yet. So, that will weigh in as a factor of all the subsequent or subordinate items that need to be brought forward. But I do believe it is still premature to ask for some of this information. However, having said all of that, if there is something that is appropriate, I'm willing to take a look at that. But when we start getting into the area of confidential information, that's where I have to say, no, we have to halt that process and delay that request. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll go to Alderman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. As the liaison to the Planning Commission, when this was brought forward at the Planning Commission and was approved unanimously- and was approved unanimously, the application for the creating the TIF was complete as presented based on the TIF guidelines that are currently on the books. Now, I know the city council, maybe about a year ago, maybe six months ago, between six months and a year ago, talked about redrafting or rewriting the TIF guidelines, but that was never finalized. And so, as far as I believe, we are still operating on the TIF guidelines that this application was submitted under. And again, at the Planning Commission, it was presented by staff and by the applicant in both cooperation. The Planning Commissioners asked multiple questions on this issue, and the application as presented contains all the information as required on the TIF application to date. I do understand city council members wanting possibly some additional information, but the applicant, even at the Planning Commission, offered one-on-one sessions to go over that information and that data. So, I'm not opposed to getting more information. If anybody knows me up here, I truly am one of those people that will continue an item until all the information that has been requested has been, has been brought forward. But there's a difference here in when you're asking for private information that may not be subject to public knowledge. And requiring the public information to go public, or to go public with private information, we have rights against that, and I would hate to step on those rights. So, I'm, just wanted to let everybody know on the city council, from the Planning Commission, the TIF application as presented, stated by both staff and the applicant, met the current requirements of a TIF application. And I didn't have any problem with the information that was presented on this. I'm ready to make my decision on December first at the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I'm not comfortable voting for this amendment just for the fact that I'm not sure specifically what that information is. And I haven't heard from our attorney as, whether or not we're required, or we have wherewithal to ask for this information that I'm not aware of. I mean, I'd like to be a little bit more specific, so I just can't support that amendment right now. Thanks.
We'll go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor, and I, there was, there was an outreach to, to review some information. We are dealing with private-public money here. If this was just their own money, that'd be a whole different story. We are talking about taking taxpayers' future revenues and streaming them into a project. If you, I went back to the meeting on some of the, on the first TIF that was given over there at School of Monsters, and it's almost identical situation. And that was some of the information that Alderman Laurenti was looking for. Some of the information I'm looking for, and I understand Mr. Estes's point on not being specific, and I'm willing to be specific and allow our city attorney to deem pertinent, whatever he felt was pertinent to make a decision. One of the decisions that you make when you make a TIF, the biggest one is, without the TIF, would this project happen? Okay. If you look at the performers that were provided, they were very vague. They have a specific project that already has the information given that tells you whether this can happen with or without the TIF. One of the, one of the things that I heard our city attorney say originally on that TIF, the first TIF that was given to buy the property for a million and a half dollars that they're now sitting on, was that it would get an appraisal. To date, there's no appraisal for that first property, that first project. So, I don't know, I don't know. I'm going by what the process says. I'm not asking for anything more than the process. I'm not asking for anything more than what is in the application. I'll be specific. I'll, I'll send my questions in to our city attorney, and you guys will all get them, and you'll be able to look at them and see if they make sense. But there's different levels of decision-making process that goes on up here. And some of us need to have the information that we feel is necessary. I'm not asking for anybody's private information. I'm asking to protect the taxpayers. That's what I'm challenged with. That's my job. There's a process that's set in place. I have nothing to do but talk about the process here. It's a process that happens. It says, do this, do this, and this, and this can happen. That hasn't been followed. I sat on the TIF committee, and one of the reasons I turned it down was the simple fact that it hadn't met it. And I asked the city attorney to do a broad outline of some of the concerns, and he sent them to everybody. And, but I would have to say there was no real specifics. I will identify that. But I didn't expect this to be here tonight. I missed it somehow. And there was nothing attached to it. There's no link. There's no nothing. So, that's why I bring that up, because I know if there's not a motion in place, nothing's going to happen. We're going to come to December first. And if you're ready to make a decision now, well, then maybe you can fill me in on how some of these things meet the criteria that's laid out in that TIF. I would love to have that conversation, because one of the, you know, the price of the property is one of them, the contracts that are available for them, the debt service on the property, the interest rates. There's requirements for the notes on these properties to be vetted. We'd have none of that information. There's no information there that says, this is going to be the specific interest rate. We're going to have a range? What is it? I mean, I mean, there's a big difference on one, two, three points on an interest rate, whether a project cash flows or not. And those are important to know, and when you have a project, you can already examine it and go, wow, okay, here's what happens. This is exactly what we know. There's five stories on that, on that building. Only four of them have revenue generated. So, there's one full floor that doesn't generate any revenue. Why is that? You know, the rent revenues, I question. There's several things that I question in it to make a good decision. Whether that'll change my mind on the process or not, I know, but at least the process will be followed. That's all I'm asking for, anything that's in the process, nothing more, nothing confidential. When you're dealing with, with the people's money, I don't think anything's confidential. When you come here and you say, hey, I want the taxpayers to participate, I think you give up a level of that confidentiality to the taxpayers so they know what they're spending their money on. There's nothing that I hide from them when I make decisions, or, or, I think when our administration makes decisions, they want to be as transparent as possible in this situation. So, I will try to get nailed on the specifics, exactly what I need. I can't speak for Alderman Laurenti or any other Alder person up here who wants more specifics, but I'll nail down the specifics I have, whatever our city attorney feels comfortable with. I'm sure I can make a decision based upon that information, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Now, we have a couple more lights, and I want to emphasize that we're, the applicants aren't here tonight, and this item doesn't have links for a reason because it's not, it's merely to set for hearing. So, if we continue the discussion, we need to be careful to not have a hearing or any part of a hearing tonight. We'll go first to our city attorney, Joel Landine.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think, if you look over the email I just resent out, it's, it's not really up to me to say you are required to submit this document. The provisions are written generally to give some flexibility. The applicant would say they've provided all the documents that are needed. Seems there is certain Aldermen that feel they would like additional information. And as the email I sent points out, ultimately, the purpose of the requirements is that you have sufficient information in which to make a decision. If you do not feel like you have sufficient information to make a decision, then you can certainly request more information. If you feel like you have sufficient information, then you don't need to. By the same token, if the applicant doesn't want to provide the additional information, they're under no requirement to do so. Then now, at that point, you have to make a decision whether you feel comfortable moving forward. It's up to you to make the decision on this TIF, so it's up to you to decide whether or not you have sufficient information. It's not for me to say, yes, you have sufficient information to make the decision, or no, you don't. That is up to you as the decision-maker to, to decide.
Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to clarify, and I can provide detail as well. I'm prepared to do that right now to the city attorney or whichever staff and office needs to make that request to the developer. But the fact of the matter is, we have an opportunity here where we planted a seed, whether you agree with that first TIF over in that area or not. The fact of the matter is, we have a TIF already approved. It's active today, right next door to a TIF that we're wanting to approve or that we're going to be debating at the hearing. And we can use that information, which is the same financial data. We would not expect any more financial data for, basically for what we're requesting than what we would have, would have asked for on that first TIF. So, the fact of the matter is, we have an opportunity to ask for that same information, but get actual, real-world data, rather than some projection, as the city attorney has said. There's some general requirements, and, you know, whether the developer has specific numbers at that time, we don't know. But the fact of the matter is, we have the, an opportunity to ask for that same information, but get specific numbers, because it's an active TIF. It's a current public financing deal, and that's the information we would be asking for, nothing more, except that we would now be getting real-world numbers. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? And since there's no further lights, I'd like to just make one more comment, and that is, if this gets to a tie vote, which I don't, I don't think that it will based on what I'm seeing from the discussion up here, but if it gets to a tie vote, I will break the tie in favor of, of you obtaining the information that you're seeking. And the alternative of that, and as to you further delineate your questions, send them to me, and let me help you get the, try to help you get the answers. And so, let's, let's proceed to the vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. I don't think we need a, need a roll call. We'll proceed to the vote to set these two items for hearing on December one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no, from Steve Laurenti. Thank you, everyone. Good discussion. We'll now move on to item number eighteen. We'll recognize Alderman Amanda Scott to read this into the record for us, item eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eighteen is to authorize staff to seek proposals for engineering services for Fulton Street Reconstruction Phase One and Fulton Street Reconstruction Phase Two. And I make a motion to approve, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Motion by Scott, second by Estes, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Terry Wolsterstorff a couple of questions?
May.
Thank you. Terry, I primarily pulled this off because it's the beginning of a project, and I thought it was a great educational tool. I even wrote that on here, educational tool. Number one, I'd like to really thank staff, all of staff, for the summary sheets and including the summary, executive summary information on the front page for the public, as well as the city council members, especially this latest addition that I just recognized that says budgeted or not budgeted. That helps a lot. For me, you have to ask that question every single time, so thank you. I'm sure you guys did it for your own selves, but thank you. I appreciate it. On this phase, my primary question, Terry, is this is going out for professional services. So, this was budgeted, and I'm assuming that all the money for Phase One and Phase Two has been budgeted for this project. According to the documentation on the inside, the actual Phase One project is going to go forward or under construction in 2016 and the second phase in 2017. So, when this is going out for bid, those funds are tied up, and is that part of the CIP carryover that's on that five-year plan?
Yes, the, like, for instance, the phase that's done in 2016, we'll bid it in 2016 when the funding's available. A lot of times, that construction will carry over to the following year, and that's, that's what impacts that carryover amount. It sometimes looks like it's very sizable. But it's because we have construction projects that are, that are under construction, and, and as you can see, some of these projects are close to $2 million in price.
Yeah, this is, this is a quite large one, and I'm sure the, the people with property along this are really looking forward to this one going on. The other question I had on here, and thank you for answering that one, I know we've talked a lot about that, but it's hard to track dollars when you're crossing multiple years like that, when we're basically dealing with a yearly budget, but we're dealing with five-year plans, so I appreciate you explaining or clarifying that. The other question I have on here, too, and this is more just with the documentation on the letter that was written up here. I'm having a hard time reconciling where it says, "Staff poses to hire a consultant that will be responsible for designing, bidding, and providing construction observation." And then, at the bottom, it says, "Staff will prepare the bids for construction." So, what is, does a consultant then work for the staff? Is, is that the language that, how this project goes forward?
Yeah, yeah, thank, thank you. I'll try to clarify that. I, I think with that last phrase, which is saying, "Staff proposes to bid and construct project" fifteen dash two-two-two-three in 2016, I think what we're saying is, our consultant will actually put the bidding documents together, but we'll actually move forward with that bid. Staff usually is the one who organizes, and we do the public noticing of the bids. We open the bids. But we have a consultant that actually prepares the design documents and all the bidding documents that go with it.
Thank you. So, if I'm understanding you, and I'm just asking, just for my clarification, even though the city itself hires a consultant, what that consultant wants, if it's an engineering firm and it's overseeing the construction and making observations and running the test and making sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, they still work with our city staff, and it's our city staff members that are still authorized control over the project?
That's correct. We assign a project manager for every project.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, and I'll be... Now that we've got a project that I can finally get my hands around, I'll be watching it over the next two or three years and seeing how this goes, so thank you. I yield the floor.
Did you hear what Brad Estes said?
No.
He said, "Stay out of his ward."
Oh. Sorry, Brad, and I know, you know, and you know, Alderman Estes has also told me in the past it's just simple math, but as we all know, when I try to do simple math up here, I can't do it.
All right. Any, thank you very much. Any further discussion on item eighteen? All in favor, say aye.
Right.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty, Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Item twenty is to acknowledge the letter from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources regarding the surface water discharge compliance inspection. I make a motion to acknowledge, and I'd like to retain the floor.
Motion, and we have a second by Laurenti, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. May I also ask Mr. Wolsterstorff a question on this one? Terry, on this one, I know it came through Public Works, and, and it looks good. And number one, I'll be the first one to say, this letter, if the public hasn't read it, it is a passing grade. I mean, there was nothing absolutely wrong with it. However, they did say that there was a potential problem identified, and that was dealing with the size of the UV. Do I have that right?
Correct.
So, my question to you is, they say that they would like to see some type of action before the next inspection. My question would be, so is this a yearly inspection, or is this just arbitrarily whenever they come out to see us, like every three years? Five years? Ten years?
Thank you. That's a great question. Actually, I don't know if this is an annual inspection or a biannual, or what that is. Of course, we are regularly inspected. We submit monthly reports to them on all of our testing practices. If we have any compliance issues where we're out of compliance with our permit, those are reported immediately, even after hours on a weekend if they happen. They're reported immediately. And, and yes, the, the letter is, you know, the main reason we actually put it on the Public Works Agenda is because over the last couple of years, we've had some compliance problems due mainly to some mechanical malfunctions. And we've been doing a substantial amount of improvements out there. But we put this on there just to let you guys know that we've been, we actually got a very good grade on this one, and the one item they mentioned, which is the UV or the ultraviolet disinfection that we do out there, that's actually under contract right now for improvement. So, we have a contractor out there working right now. That'll be completed before we start disinfecting again, and I believe April is we, when we disinfect, from April through October.
So, if that's being corrected now with the existing system, what the suggestion was, was potentially upsizing if needed. Is there also a study going on to see if the city needs to upsize our system?
Our, actually, our project that we're under contract right now takes care of what they're mentioning here. We're actually going to be upsizing or increasing the amount of ultraviolet disinfection equipment that we utilize.
All right, and thank you for that clarification. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Any further discussion on item twenty? We'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, and I too want to applaud the staff for doing all the hard work and getting everything ready for this inspection. There's three particular individuals that are named in that letter that are recognized. And I know the, the volume of work in letters and reports that they have to prepare for this inspection by the states. And if I'm not mistaken, Public Works Director Walter Storff, I think this is like a PCI report or inspection that they do, not on an annual basis. And I think it's their call when they decide to come out and when it's, when they do these inspections. My report is still loading, and I can't bring it up and read it verbatim, but it... But that's my recollection, is that the PCI is done on an as-needed basis, so. It's not an annual report, but, but the, the UV system needs attention out there. And I hope to have this item, like to see it, item coming forward in the near future. And it may be coming up as a standalone project, not coming through CIP or anything like that, so. Again, it's just... So again, it's just that the staff is doing tremendous work for the conditions and the atmosphere and the environment that they have to work in. It, it's just, just can't say enough kudos for what the staff has to go through. Thank you, Mayor. Yield the floor.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on item number 31. We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Item number 31 is approved Monday, excuse me, approved moving Wednesday, November 26, 2014, legal and finance committee, to Tuesday, November 25, 2014, immediately following the Public Works Committee. Move approval?
The motion to approve, approved by Lewis, and second by Laurenti, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to pull this one, because it is a different off week, and the agendas won't come out until later this week, so we don't know what items are on there, but in case anyone is interested in what is happening at the Legal and Finance Committee meeting, it is going to be held on Tuesday of this week, and that's the only reason I was pulling it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 32, Chad.
Item number 32 is Resolution 2014-108, right enough uncollectible accounts, receivable accounts. I move approval.
Motion to approve, and a second by Nordstrom. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. On this item, I found it very, very interesting. The total amount is significant, but, well, significant to me, it may not be significant to the city. There were primarily just two or three major contributors, and it looks like they probably are businesses or individuals that no longer reside in the city. My biggest question, and I'm not sure if Terry can answer this, or if Pauline can answer this, but I found it very, very interesting on the, the billing that was proposed and has to be write-off for someone who was on the scale at the landfill and drove off. Was that captured by video? Is that how we tracked them down, by their license plate, or, or how, how do we know that they drove off?
All right, I would say our scale operator, excuse me, our scale operator would be the one who would report that. And the answer would be, yeah, we should have a video of the, of the drive-off, more than likely, but sometimes, you know, you may not be able to, to locate them and recoup the money.
Thank you, Terry. I know that a lot of the convenience stores and gas stations have surveillance tapes because of the drive-offs. I actually applaud the city, if they've got the cameras out there, and we can actually, you know, make sure that the fees are being paid to the landfill that, that are, that should be paid to the landfill, so. I was kind of curious to see if we had tracked down our first video capture of someone driving off of the scale, but I guess I'll wait to hear about it.
Yeah, it's actually a new show on Fox.
Is it?
Yeah.
Reality TV?
Amanda, how much was the amount that you're referring to?
The amount that I was referring to, it's being written off, but it was a non-payment. It was for $25.02, but wasn't able to collect it, even with them being caught and driving off the scale, so. The significant one on there, Mayor, since you asked, was for a non-payment on a damaged streetlight, and that was over almost $1,700. So wish we could have got that one, but unfortunately, we didn't.
My understanding is, Terry, is, if it's written off, it can actually still be collected, so would, would you work with Alderman and Scott to try to get her, get her answers on the two issues that she raised tonight, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We'll go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask Mr. Wolsterstorff a question.
Go ahead.
Terry, on a drive-off, simply, they could have drove up, weighed their truck, went up, dumped it, and then forgot to come back.
That is probably what happened in this case, because we, looking at the dollar amount, 25.02, there was a specific tonnage involved, so we had to weigh them going in, and they did not stop coming back out to pay.
It's, it's something that can happen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on items four, what's that? Video's on YouTube. All right. We're now on items 46 through 110. We do have one speaker request form, and this is on item number 48, and we'll recognize Bob Brant. Good evening, Bob. While you're coming up, I'll read this item into the record, so people watching know what we're talking about here, is, this is first reading of ordinance 6023, an ordinance to revise the procedure and amounts for parking violations by amending the municipal code. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I know Heidi Weaver kind of struggled on where to put this. It really doesn't pertain to the increasing the parking, or changing the parking fines. I don't know how many, if you've ever seen these before, but these are temporary parking permits, where you can get when you're doing construction downtown, and what it allows is, you pay $5, and you can stay in the same spot downtown all, instead of moving it every two hours. The little problem is, is they're only good when commercial vehicles. Now, most of the projects downtown, the small remodels are done by smaller construction companies like my own. I have one or two carpenters that don't drive commercial vehicles, my lead carpenter, but they've got a lot of tools in their trucks, so it's tough for them to go out and move their trucks every two hours. What I'm proposing, if you guys saw the little letter, is to amend this, and, and I'm not really sure it takes an ordinance. I know I was working with Sergeant Scott Sills today, and we really couldn't find where it was in the ordinance. If you look at 104415, the authority of the Chief of Police to designate temporary parking zones, we're not sure if that's where the authority for these passes came in or not, but what I'd like to propose is that, on a, on a construction project downtown, that we'd be able to, to allow, like, say, the building permit costs $1,000, which translates basically to about a $50,000 remodel, which is pretty big for downtown, that we, that the Chief of Police would be able to allow two vehicles that do not have commercial plates to buy these parking passes. On a bigger project, say, a $2,000 building permit might be $150,000 remodel, maybe you can allow four parking passes that are not commercial plates. It would certainly help, rather than having our carpenters go out and move their trucks every two hours when they don't have commercial plates, so that's all I'm proposing.
Thank you very much. Would you not have any further speaker request forms on items 46 through 110? Have I missed anyone? Last call. Okay, public comment is now closed. We'll proceed with item number 46. Alderman Lewis.
Item number 46 is first reading of ordinance 6020, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of parking revenue, refunding bonds, and pledging certain revenues in City Rapid City. Payment of said bonds, authorizing officers of the city to approve, execute and deliver certain agreements and documents relating to bonds. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 47.
Item number 47 is a first reading of ordinance 6022, an ordinance to provide prepayment of claims for services by adding section 3.04.035 of the Rapid Municipal Code, and move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. 48.
Item number 48 is first reading of ordinance 6023, an ordinance to revise the procedure and, procedure for and amounts of penalties for parking violations by amending chapters 10.40 and 10.44 of the Rapid Municipal Code. I move approval and direct, no, just move approval. Yield the floor.
Motion by Lewis, second by Scott. Any discussion? Alderman, Jerry Wright.
Just want to make sure that these two letters we received are part of the record, and also a question on the non-commercial vehicles. When we issue this, do they have to have a commercial plate, or can you issue it to, if they have a private plate and they're a professional, like a carpenter or plumber? Is that, is that the grounds for it, basis?
Our practice has been to issue them only to commercial plates.
I'd like to, please come back with a recommendation on how we can maybe straighten that out, if that's possible. Okay, thank you.
Would you like to give a timeframe for that? Is there a way for you to vote on?
First reading's fine, but I think before the second meeting, I'd like to have maybe some assistance on how we could possibly do that. Sometimes we, we put a specific word on things, sometimes we cripple things, and there's other examples I could use that are examples, but certainly, a lot of professionals, like carpenters, or, they do not carry a commercial plate, but I think Bob's got a valid point. Let's see if we can help. If we can't, we can't. Let's see what we can do.
Perhaps another option would be to tie it to the, to the license as well, since the professionals are typically, they're licensed by the city in some other capacity, some of that might be an, an option, if you have a building permit above a certain size and you have a, a permit, but that can be talked about when it comes back.
Maybe, maybe the point is that, that the, the permit is issued to do the remodeling, and the employees, if the deciding factor is whether they have a commercial plate or not, I don't know if that, I don't think we have to stick to that that strictly, because what we're worried about is the permit being done, paid, and the work being done right. I'd just like some thought on this. I'd certainly be willing to discuss it further myself, but I'm stuck for words right now, or a solution for it, but I think we can do something.
First go to, next go to Charity Doyle. Alderman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question would be for Chief Jaggers, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm curious, and we didn't have the background information on this, what factors are actually driving this proposed increase, particularly on the, the parking fine structure?
The graduated parking sanctions, I think the primary purpose is to prevent the incidental citation for tourists or one-time visitors to downtown Rapid City. And so by replacing the first citation with a courtesy warning, then the second and third offense are going to have increased costs. And really, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to control the behavior of those that are frequent and repetitive, and maybe even intentional parking violators in the downtown area. As you know, we continue to get more of a demand on parking down there. There's, there's so many issues that we have for full-time employees dedicated to parking enforcement in the core area of downtown.
Okay. Was the courtesy issue, was there given, any consideration given to out-of-town plates for a warning versus that before restructuring the, the entire process?
No. This was a project that was done collaboratively between the police department, the city attorney's office, and finance, and first-time offenders, regardless of where you're from, in a 90-day period, would be treated the same.
All right, and so, so what I'm hearing is that the only reason we looked at this was to alleviate some of these people that are coming down and, and maybe don't see the sign, and you, they get a courtesy warning.
That's one of the primary factors. We unintentionally are upsetting a lot of people that are downtown to visit or shop, and so this is a way to remove that, those problems and that conflict that occurs.
Was there any reach out to the Downtown Association or the downtown business owners?
Yes, the Downtown Association was involved in the discussions leading up to this concept.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Well, next go to our city finance officer, Pauline Sumption. Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things. First of all, I think that we need to keep Mr. Brant's item completely separate from the ordinance, because it is currently not found in the ordinance anyway, and Chief Jaggers and I were talking before the meeting, and we want to sit down and really analyze what is going on. This is handled all by, that part of it is handled all by his office, and so there's nothing in the ordinance for it right now, so I'd like to hold those two things separately. Just to cha, or, excuse me, tag on a little bit to what Chief Jaggers was saying, part of the, the thought process and the dollar amounts for the graduated fines, first of all, it's been years since we have even looked at our parking fine structure, and I have some information that I'm actually going to ask be attached to the second reading, going back to 2011, how many people had first-time offense, tickets, second time, third, et cetera. Also, there's some history on there, some research that Loeann did that looks at other communities and what their tickets are, and if people think that what we're proposing is outrageous, you should see some of these other communities, including Aberdeen, South Dakota. It, it's quite eye-opening. I feel like we're still reasonable. We do have parking revenue bonds. Granted, you just approved first reading of an ordinance tonight to refinance those. However, we still have covenant requirements that we have to make. So in looking at the dollar amounts for our proposal and the ordinance amendment, I took the numbers from 2011 and applied the $5 per ticket in addition to the graduated fines, and for, it's reasonably revenue-neutral based on those number of tickets. And if that's the case, we're still okay with our bond covenants. But if we lose money, because I know there's a letter here voicing some concerns about the, raising the fees, but if we lose money extensively, we will not meet our bond covenants, and that could cause more problems than just this one bond issue. So I guess, when you, when you hear the complaints of the citizens and the business owners, while I understand their concerns, we, we still have to meet those bond covenants. We have to keep that in mind. In addition, as Chief Jaggers said, we do have some repeat offenders, that they're the ones that are concerned about this, but we have multiple eight- and 10-hour meters downtown within a, on Kansas City Street, on Quincy Street. There, there are places where they can park that aren't too far away, and we are trying to encourage employees specifically to use those locations and leave those spots in front of the businesses for the customers, the ones that bring the sales tax into downtown, the ones that go to their businesses and, you know, basically pay for their employees' wages by, by purchasing items there. If those spots aren't open for their customers, that's a bigger problem, I think, and so that's one of the things that we were thinking about, too, when we were looking at the graduated fines.
We'll now go to Alderman, Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to thank the finance officer that answered a lot of my questions. However, I still have a couple left, because my, one of my main concerns was whether it was going to be revenue-neutral, or so that we could meet our bonding, so I was glad to hear that. If, I just wanted to add some clarity, maybe, and, and Alderman Wright can maybe come in on this, because I would like to see that same information, not attached to these two things, that I think that it's unrelated, but I think Mr. Brant's proposal has some merit to it. My question to you, Chief, maybe some other thoughts on this, to come back with some information, maybe we can direct staff to, to do something separately from these two items that evening when we, I, I assume we'll approve these. But on this particular item that Mr. Brant brought forward, what's the feasibility of it? Do we have the capacity to do that, knowing how limited parking is downtown? My, the other question I have is...
If you don't mind me interrupting you, on, on that particular question with Mr. Brant's letter, let's, let's, let's put that on Legal and Finance next week, and let's take that out of, out of this particular discussion, just focus on this, because that's really a, a separate process and a separate issue, if you don't mind.
I don't.
Okay?
I don't.
Go ahead with your other...
No, I'm good. I'll yield the floor. I, I can reserve my comments for that particular issue at Legal and Finance. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I've gotten several phone calls about this and some personal contacts, primarily from the YMCA area on this, and I believe I've gotten all the answers and, and support from the staff to explain it back to those folks that are asking these questions, and I, I believe we got that portion of those questions cleared up for them. However, there's still, their main concern is, what are we doing for their, what we, meaning they, the YMCA, is doing for their staff, volunteers, and then also a new subject that came up for them as, as far as the, the membership, because their major concern is, is what that will do for their membership as well. So I almost kind of consider some of these chronic violators as doing this as, as part of their business. They just factor it in as, as, as normal expense for parking downtown, so I don't mind taking a real serious look at, at the data that, that is becoming available on the chronic violators. And the other one has to do with the employee parking. I totally agree, that is going to be a constant issue to deal with that. I know some businesses will terminate employees if they park in front of or very near for, to their businesses, and so some businesses are being very progressive about that. And this leads into a very long-term issue, and I don't want to discuss it tonight, but I just want to put it, plant the seed, is that we've had this discussion about an additional parking ramp in this area of town, any, in, anywhere near the YMCA and over on the west side, so I just want to plant the seed that we need to take a look in that area. Thank you.
Alderman, Jerry Wright.
I, too, had some calls from businesses downtown, concerned about impact on their businesses, whether they can continue to function and so forth with parking limitations, and I think it's been a tackle, a task for the city for years. I just want to remind everybody that about a year ago, we were looking at President's Plaza, which would have brought a parking structure to downtown Rapid City, and it slipped through our fingers. So, we need to reinvigorate and get that, or something like it, going, because the downtown area is growing, and the demand is there, and it isn't, it isn't, there's more people and the spaces have not increased. The town hasn't grown, and I think we need to do something, and we missed a chance a year ago. Thank you.
Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is so reminiscent of a few years back when we did the whole complete downtown study of all the parking spots, all, and if people park downtown, you realize if you're two blocks off of downtown, you're metered. If you're on Main and St. Joe, you're not metered. We had this discussion about how you control it. I think our Finance Officer pointed out an important fact that we have to understand, that some of the offenders are paying for the spots that other people are getting subsidized to be used, like the ramps, the snow removal, those types of things that all come inherent with parking. So, as we go forward and we identify this, it's first-time offenders, I mean, I'm not sure how many of them are complaining about, you know, parking in a spot. I think in this world, in today's day and age, that most people know if you're going to park downtown, no matter where you're at, probably going to have either a meter, or you're going to have some sort of time limit on how you should park there. So, it's really complicated to feel bad for somebody getting a five-dollar ticket. I've gotten a couple of them myself, just by overextending my timeframe, but I, I do know that there's a complete resistance against metering Main and St. Joe, which generates revenue for the, the things that they, they, they have now with all the parking ramps and the parking, the, the flat level parking, all that stuff. So, it's, it's important that as we move forward and we, we talk about this, is that we keep in mind that the offenders pay a lot of money for the people that are using the parking spots and the ramps and whatever have you, and you're right, there is an opportunity. We've been on hold for several years on a parking ramp that would have been downtown. At one point in time, the councils before us had decided that they would look into a private-public partnership that hasn't transpired yet, which hasn't allowed that parking lot to go forward. So, moving forward, if, if we all agree on the numbers, I can support whatever fine, fines we have available, and understanding that, 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 that money is used to subsidize people that are in the ramps, that people that are in the flat parking, all those areas, so that at the same time, maybe there's an opportunity to look at what we're charging. It costs a lot of money to park. People that own businesses in our community understand that, you know, when they come down and get their city permits and they have to put in parking spots, and then they get taxed on them, all those things, it, it costs a lot of money. So, the people that are on downtown, in their businesses downtown, must understand that it costs money to remove snow, it costs money to maintain the, the flat levels, the parking ramps, all those, all those things cost money, and that's what causes some of this, and we'll, we'll never, ever make a hundred percent of the people happy on this idea, no matter how we approach it, but the main thing is that, like, our Finance Director says that we do have bonds out there that are paying for parking that we have available. If we start teetering with those things, that could jeopardize where we're at, so making sure that we're at minimum neutral. But looking, moving forward, if they want more parking, the fees are going to have to be raised, either, you know, with offenders or the people that are paying, you know, directly paying those, keeping that in mind, I think that this, I'm not sure if this has been vetted like that, I guess I'm not sure, but make sure that we do vet it. I can support whatever decision comes forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This is first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If we can, if we can just get a, a quick motion here to refer the request by Mr. Brant regarding parking for construction workers, we'll refer that to the next Legal and Finance meeting for further discussion. Motion by Lewis, second by Estes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item number forty-nine. Mr. Lewis.
Item number forty-nine is second reading of ordinance sixty-eighteen, ordinance to consolidate the vision city and capital, vision city, boy, the city's vision and capital improvement funds into separate accounts within a unified fund by amending chapter three point sixteen of the Rapid Municipal Code. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no, from Alderman Wyffenbach. Item fifty.
Item fifty, second reading of ordinance sixty-zero-two, an ordinance to amend chapter fifteen point fourteen of the Rapid Municipal Code to adopt two thousand and twelve International Property Maintenance Code. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fifty-one.
Item fifty-one is a second reading of ordinance sixty-fifty-one, eleven, excuse me, an ordinance to amend the Rapid Municipal Gas Code by amending certain provisions in chapter fifteen point twenty of the Rapid Municipal Code. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fifty-two.
Item fifty-two is second reading of ordinance sixteen, sixty-seventeen, ordinance to adopt in the two thousand and twelve International Building Code by amending chapter fifteen point twelve of the Rapid Municipal Code. I move approval.
By Lewis, second by Scott. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item fifty-three?
Yes.
Item fifty-three is first reading of ordinance sixty-nineteen, ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid Municipal Code to create a planned unit development zoning district in the described property generally located at Elkvale and Taggart Road, North Elkvale and Taggart Road. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-four. We'll go to Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor. A request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc., for Founders Park LLC for a preliminary subdivision plat for proposed lots ten and eleven of Founders Park subdivision, located, generally located west of Founders Park Drive and Philadelphia Street intersection, and I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fifty-five. Amanda?
A request by Ferber Engineering Company for Aspen Ridge Lawn and Landscape LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for the proposed lot one of Country Meadows subdivision, generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Crowell Avenue and Sheridan Lake Road, and I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to approve items fifty-six through one hundred and ten.
I need abstain from item fifty-six.
Oh, okay. We'll pull item fifty-six. Are there any other, any other items that need to be pulled for separate consideration? Fifty-six through one hundred and ten. Seeing none, we have a, a motion to approve fifty-seven through one hundred and ten.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-six. Chad, would you read this into the record for us?
Item fifty-six is on-sale liquor license for Buffalo Wildwing, oh, excuse me, BDUBS, U-Dubs, okay, B-Dubs, whatever. Doing business Buffalo Wild Wings, seven fifteen Mountain View Road, on, for real retail on-sale liquor license. I move approval.
Second.
We have motion for approval, and we have a second by Doyle. Any discussion? And we, we'll have one abstention.
What does B-Dubs stand for?
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries with one abstention from Alderman Brad Estes. That takes us to, all the way up to item one-eleven. We have, public hearing is now open for items one-eleven through one-seventeen. I do not have any speaker request forms from these items. Have I missed anyone? Have I missed anyone? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve items one-eleven through one-sixteen. A motion by Doyle and second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And actually, one-sixteen is a hearing item, so that needs to be, that was through one-fifteen, so we'll go now to one-sixteen. Chad Lewis, if you'd read this into the record for us. This is an ordinance.
All I'll do is work. Okay. Item number one-sixteen. Really?